Will you stand if you choose for the invitation led by the Reverend Tim Tyson? Also remain standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Dr. Richard Showers.
Oh my God, oh my God. Unite the hearts of thy servants and reveal to them thy great purpose. May they follow thy commandments and abide in thy law. Help them, oh God, in their endeavor and grant them strength to serve thee. Oh God, leave them not to themselves. Guide their steps by the light of thy knowledge and cheer their hearts by thy love. Verily thou art their helper and their Lord.
Thank you Reverend Tyson and thank you Dr. Showers. Council members, you have before you an electronic copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting, or any changes or recommendations. Hearing none, the minute stands as recorded. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Kenny Anderson to come forward. This is the Caffey Youth of the Month night tonight. And Kenny, I think we have somebody special we want to recognize tonight.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We have our December Star 99.1 FM. Caffey Young Citizen of the Month. He is Peter Smith. Peter is a 10th grade student at Columbia High School. Huntsville High, I'm sorry. Huntsville, I'm doing this by memory tonight. Huntsville High, who is a recent Eagle Scout. He has spent about 500 hours in community service, which means that he's been a very busy person because he also has a job called school. It is important to also note that he spent substantial time working on a major project at Hampton Cove that yielded a garden that now produces vegetables for the Huntsville City School System Lunch Program. He is very interested in attending college and going into the armed forces as a commission officer. We're delighted to present tonight the December Star 99.1 FM. Caffey Young Citizen of the Month, Peter Smith. Congratulations. So Pete, on behalf of the Optimist Club, one of our new partners, we're going to give you a $25 gift certificate tonight.
Thank you.
And that's the first of several things that we want to give you. At this time, we're going to let Joe come up from Huntsville Utilities to say something to you as well.
Peter, just thank you for your leadership, for your example. And on behalf of Huntsville Utilities, we're going to offer you some things as tokens of our appreciation for what you're doing for this community and for your peers. But leading by example is a wonderful thing, and so thank you for everything that you're doing.
Peter, on behalf of Rocket City Broadcasting, Star 99, I want to congratulate you and thank you for your service. Here's another bag of goodies for you.
Peter, on behalf of the Human Relations Commission from the city of Huntsville, Caffey, Huntsville Utilities, Star 99.1, and Huntsville Police Department, I present you the Caffey Certificate. Congratulations.
And Peter, on behalf of Chief Mark McMurray and the entire Huntsville Police Department, would like to present you with this certificate and this token for your leadership. I challenge you, sir, to continue to be a leader and an innovator in our community. Thank you for the job you've done.
And finally, Peter, I know your hands are full here. I think you've gotten a gift from everybody in the city already, but we have a coin from the city for you. And the coin from the city is made for people who've shown leadership, who've shown value for this community, and made this community a better place, and you definitely have done that. Here's your coin from the city, and I want to say thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Peter Smith. Thank you very much and congratulations. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're now at Agenda Item 4B2, Adoption Only. We have a resolution 4B2A, Resolution Congratulating New Life Seven Day Adventist Church on their grand opening celebration to be held December the 5th through the 6th, 2015, sponsored by Dr. Showers. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Russell. Discussion. Hearing none. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Is there any other special recognition this evening?
Mr. President, I'd like to say that on tomorrow, this resolution will be presented. New Life is a new bought church of Pulaski Pike. They were originally over on Blue Springs Road, but tomorrow they would recognize their ribbon cutting, their dedication, the new edifices there on Pulaski Pike. And at that time, I will present this resolution on behalf of the mayor and the council members.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. We're now at 4D announcements. Be reminded, council members, that 10B7 has been deleted along with 10, I'm sorry, 15S, along with Agenda Item 15S, as in Sierra. We have no business with legal outside representation. We're now at Agenda Item Number 6, Public Hearings. No public hearings to be held. We have one public hearing to be set. Agenda Item 6B, One Resolution to Set a Public Hearing on An Ordnance Amending Article 92, Board of Adjustments, Section 92.5, Powers and Duties, Subsection 92.5.3, Permitted Uses as Special Exceptions by Amending Subsection 92.5.3, Subsection 38, To Delete Neighborhood Business C1A District and Add Village Business C6 District as Permitted District. This will be held January the 28th, 2016, at our regular council meeting.
Move to side the hearing.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at Agenda Item Number 7, Communications and Reports. Communications from the public, 7A. As I call your name, if you would come to the microphone, state your name and address, and you'll have approximately three minutes to address the mayor and council. Mr. Earl Jordan. Mr. Jordan.
My name is Earl Jordan. I live at 2605 Cars Bag Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, originally Huntsville. I got the shock of my life. I pulled up to the dollar store, and a little lady was coming out, and she was crying. And I asked, you know, I looked down at her. She had used the bathroom herself. And I went in the dollar store, Dollar Tree, and I went to use the bathroom. They said out of order. Then I got the check, and I went to every dollar store and Dollar Tree, and they were saying it was out of order. You know, it's a shame. We spend the money there, they take our money there, but we only use the bathroom. I mean, going back to the '40s and '50s, when we couldn't use the bathroom, but we could spend our dollars? That ain't right. This lady's about 80 years old, I imagine, and they wouldn't let her use the bathroom. And every time you go ask, their bathroom out of order. Now, I know there's plenty of problems in town, can take care of it, but every time you go back, it's the same question, same answer. Can't use the bathroom.
Mr. Jordan, are you finished, sir?
Yes, I guess I am.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And is there anyone who can maybe get with Mr. Jordan and address this issue? I know that these places of business do not serve food, so I'm not sure if they have to provide a restroom, but someone from inspections or community development, perhaps? Ms. Jordan, would you like to address that now, Ms. Jordan? Thank you. If you'll come to the microphone, please. Or if you would like to speak with him just privately, you certainly can do that. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. And thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Dr. Showers?
Before you move to the next item, our attorney is here, and I'm delighted. This is not just a situation in the North. This is happening all over the city, where these proprietors are saying to citizens that their facility is not working. Do you know of anything that we have on the book that would address that from your desk?
I think the first thing that we'll need to do, and there may be department heads here who know the answer to this question, and I think, Mr. Culver, you may have alluded to it, or someone did, that all food service establishments are required to have accessible restrooms. I don't know whether just retail commercial establishments are required to have them and have them accessible to the public, but we'll check that and make sure of that and report that back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Joffreyon. Thank you, Dr. Showers. Ms. Jackie Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for laying the public into tonight. I would like for you to tell the public when the next meeting is, even I have a hard time keeping up with you when you change the Christmas dates on it. A lot of people don't read the paper. Please put it on AL.com and everywhere you can, so everybody can kind of know. Had a problem parking downtown tonight. Golly. Of course, it's Christmas. We can go along with that right now, I guess. I want to thanks to Mr. Mark Russell and Jeanne Robinson for the beautiful cars they sent for me about being on the Today Show. It was a big honor for me to be on the Today Show. If you happen to miss it, it's on AL.com and Channel 48. It was a good honor for me. I have to brag on myself just a little. Hope you don't mind after 30 years here. And I appreciate you being nice to the producer when he came in here. Attended Mr. Showers' Town Hall meeting last week. I learn more at his meetings than I do coming to these council meetings. That was one of the best meetings. All the directors and most of the department heads missed some of them speaking, but that should have been televised and let the public know some of these people. Some of the public have never seen some of these people. I thought that was a great meeting, and it was a good meeting. It's very informative, and I enjoy it very, very much. And like I said, a lot of people need to know the directors of some of these department heads. Traffic in the city, absolutely, we got to do something about it. It's not getting any better. We can talk about developing and developing and developing. We don't talk about the chaos and the traffic and jam up here and jam up there. I mean, let's do an inner-huddle loop around this city or do something different, up and down that partway besides the roller coasters. If we put all them businesses out, now you want to buy their businesses. So you got to think up something different than what you're doing up there. I hope next year, I don't want to fuss too much because it is Christmas coming up, and I'm thankful for a lot of things. Stone Middle School, that was a steal. Whoever sold that property right there surely didn't know what they were doing. I think that's a shame to myself that they, what's going on over there, and they gave that school away. There's two things that I'd like for you to hold and tell the salary to the public tonight of your lobbyist, that you're going to hire your lobbyist tonight, and tell them what the salary is. I have a, tonight is the mayor's birthday, is it? Oh, I wish him a happy, happy birthday. If the public and all the people were here, a whole lot of us would sing happy birthday to you. But since we're not, I got a present I'd like to give, if you'll give me another second to give it to him.
Yes, ma'am.
It's pretty. My daughter said, "Go give it to him." And I said, "I kind of hate to." He's a friend of mine. It's a sock doll, and it says, "Sock it to me." And I will tell you, if you play him, but what it's all about, Mayor Battle, I want you to take him, because when you do things that you know Jackie Reed's going to take you on about, play this hand right here, because you know I'm going to sock it to you. I want you to have this doll. Happy birthday. But you gave me a bumblebee, so, I mean, we're even, sort of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And it doesn't cost over $25, does it?
Oh, no. We came from the fridge four years ago.
Baby George, our new grandbaby, who is seven months old, will love that. I will have it for me this weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Thank you, Mayor Battle.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Councilman Kline.
I think Ms. Reed raised a valid issue, in fact, that kind of scares me when she and I are kind of thinking on the same way. But as you know, I've talked to you, I think you're going to schedule a work session where we can talk about traffic flow in the city.
Yes.
And I've been doing some studying up on it. One thing that I think is kind of interesting, or a little bit positive on this thing concerning the traffic flow, this year we're spending about $62 million in the budget for roads and road arteries and everything. That's not going to solve the problem, obviously, but there's some steps that look like are going in a positive direction, but...
Absolutely.
Mr. President, have you decided exactly when we're going to be having that work session?
Yes, sir. I'm waiting on a confirmation. I believe the first Thursday in January, January the 7th. I want to make sure that all of your items, as well as Dr. Showers and Mr. Hamilton, are ready for, the staff are ready for presentation. And we'll be sending an email to confirm that with all of the council members. Thank you, Mr. Kline. Council members, we're now at Agenda Item Number 8, Huntsville Utility Items. We have five items that are for introduction only. Mr. Gertis will be here to answer any questions that you may have. However, these items are just for introduction. 8A is an introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 2, Electric Service Division 2, Service Regulations, Section 26-84, Standards of Customer Wiring. Section 26-87, Deposits. Section 26-89, Billing. Section 26-96, Notice of Trouble. And Section 26-102, Right of Entry. Section 26-103, Termination of Contract by Customer. Division 3 Rates, Charges and Service Classification Subsection or Subdivision 2. Residential Rates, Section 26-143, Carrier of Service, Section 26-146, Payments. Subsection 4, Outdoor Lighting Rates, Section 26-193, Payments. Section 26-195, Rates Generally of the City of Huntsville Code of Ordinances, brought by Huntsville Utilities. 8B is Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 26, Article 3, Natural Gas Services of the City of Huntsville Code of Ordinances, Consisting of 21 Sections to be amended. And council members, I believe you received a copy of those. 8C is Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 21, Article 2, Sewers and Sewerage Disposal, Section 21-276, Billing of the City of Huntsville Code of Ordinances, Huntsville Utilities Joint. 8B is an Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 22, Article 4, Solid Ways, Section 22-187, Penalty for Non-Payment of the City of Huntsville Code of Ordinances, Joint with the Utilities. 8E is Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 26, Article 4, Water Services, Division 4, Deposits, Section 26-581, Generally Division 5, Meters, Section 26-607, Fire Protection and Fire Service Lines and Systems, Section 26-608, Test Division, Section 6, Rates and Charges, Billing and Collection Procedures, Subsection 2, Billing and Collection Procedures, Section 26-641, When Consumers Bill. Section 26-644, Penalties, Division 7, Water Conservation Plan, Section 26-677, Mandatory Conservation Stage Implementation of the City of Huntsville Code of Ordinances, brought by Utilities and Water. Any discussion on that, council members? And thank you.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Gertis, for providing us with a marked-up red-lined copy. It's extremely helpful when changes are made in ordinances that we get that perspective of what those changes were, so that was very helpful. One of the things I noted was that there are changes in rates, and those rates have already been approved. This simply is codifying those and making it all consistent, right?
Correct. What you see before you represents quite a few years' worth of changes in policies and procedures that have been adopted by council but that have not been reflected in the city code. So I would characterize this as housekeeping. And the reason we want to do this right now is because we are in the, we are about to publish a customer care manual that includes all of our customer service policies in one place that our customers can access at any time. And as we began going through that process, we realized there were some inconsistencies between adopted policies and city code. So we want to make sure that's all cleaned up before we publish this document, and that's what you see before you right now.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, and thank you, Mr. Gertis, for...
Mr. Gertis, if I could ask, while you're going through this process, if, I've gotten calls, and maybe other council members have too, about, I think, the new bills that have come out that have the notation availability charge for water and electricity and everything like that. Is there a way y'all could maybe put some sort of explanation of that in the booklet? And I guess maybe even underline the fact that this is not any type of a rate increase, it's just basically the old charges being broken out where the public will understand things better.
Yes, sir. And I want to be very sure everyone understands we're not trying to sock it to anyone with these ordinance changes. All those availability charges, and the reason they seem new to people is because you may recall, we went to a full-page invoice in 2011. When we were doing the postcard bill, all the charges were lumped together on just a per-service line. When we broke the charges out, the perception was that it was new. It's not new. And what I want to do is, when we come for approval on these items, is spend a few minutes talking to council about where we stack up on availability charges. The reason for the availability charges is to cover all the hard costs associated with delivering service to our customers. Those are costs the utility incurs whether or not the services are consumed. And from time to time, as the cost of doing business goes up, those fees do increase. These ordinance revisions do not represent any increases in rates or fees of any kind.
Thank you, Mr. Gertis. Any further discussion, council members? We'll take this up at our next scheduled council meeting, December the 17th. We're now at Agenda Item 8F, Resolution Authorizing Approval for the Purchase of Software for Customer Care Optimization, PR 10201180, brought by Utilities. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. 8G is a Resolution Authorizing Approval for the Purchase of Outside Services to Make Building Installation Repairs, PR 10201558, Utilities. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kline. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Council members, we have no board appointments to be voted on. 9B is Board Appointment Nominations. Any nominations?
Mr. President, might be helpful. I know that you'd sent an email out, but I believe the council has affirmed the county's appointment of Dr. Carl Gessler, reappointment to the Airport Authority, and I guess we can put that on the record.
Yes, sir. And we sent a letter reiterating that from the council. Thank you, Councilman Kline. We're now at Agenda Item Number 10, Approval of Expenditures. 10A is a Resolution Authorizing Expenditures for Payment. Dr. Showers?
Mr. President, I would ask that the council would approve $6,447,591.51.
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Showers, second by Councilman Kline, to approve expenditures in the amount of $6,447,591. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. Dr. Showers, Finance Committee Report.
Mr. President, the following items are up tonight to be approved. A resolution approving travel for Bill Culver to attend the Municipal Leadership Institute and Expo Meeting on December the 9th, 2015.
Motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Russell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries.
Resolution approving travel for Bill Culver to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities 2016 Annual Convention from May 14th through 17th. That convention will be here in Huntsville.
Second.
Motion by the Chair, second by Mr. Kline. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries.
Resolution approving travel for Richard Showers Sr. to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities 2016 Annual Convention, May 14th through the 17th. That convention also will be here in Huntsville.
Motion by the Chair?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kline. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries.
Approving travel for Mark Russell to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities 2016 Annual Convention from May 14th through the 17th. Again, that meeting, convention will be here in Huntsville.
Motion by the Chair?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries.
Resolution approving travel for Jeanne Robinson to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities 2016 Annual Convention, May 14th through the 17th. That convention also will be held in Huntsville.
Motion by the Chair?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kline. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries.
Resolution approving travel for Bill Kline to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities 2016 Annual Convention, May 14th through the 17th. It would be held here in the city of Huntsville.
Motion by the Chair?
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, it carries. And council members, be reminded, Agenda Item 107, 10B7 has been deleted.
Mr. President, I think just for public clarification, we're following the process where we publicly approve travel or going to these conferences, but obviously for the five council members, we are, there's no airfare, there's no taxi fare, there's no hotel. All it is is just simple registration, so...
And that is correct. Thank you, Councilman Kline, for making the public aware of that. Thank you, Dr. Showers, for your Finance Committee Report. We're now at Agenda Item Number 11, Communications from the Mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Reed, thank you for the pedophores that you didn't make, but you purchased for us. Thank you very much. And thank you also for the Sock It To Me monkey, which I've never had one of those given to me before, so thank you. It's very special. You know, it is a birthday, and it's an anniversary of my 39th birthday, and many, many anniversary of my 39th birthday, so thank you, everybody, for attending and all the food that was brought by today. I felt like I ate my way through the city. Started off this morning with cupcakes and went all the way through. 2 o'clock today, we had a special party as we lit the tree for city employees. But this is the holiday season, and we hope that everybody remembers the holidays and remembers all the activities that are happening down here. Everything from Tinsel Trail to ice skating in the rink, to all the Christmas trees in the park, to Santa's Village, Barrett Museums Program, the Botanical Garden, having the Galaxy of Lights. There's just a lot going on right now, and I would hope that everybody takes advantage of this. This is kind of when we come back together and we become community. It's a great time to see others and see people throughout the community and come together. And also, it's a great time also for children and kids, to take them out and let them have something to do. So I would hope that everybody enjoys the holiday season, slow down just a little. So I would hope that everybody enjoys the holiday season, slow down just a little bit. I agree with Ms. Reed. Been out on the roads ever since Thanksgiving and December. The roads get very, very full because everybody's out there trying to rush around and shop. And I'd advise, you know, if we could give one bit of advice, it's, you know, sit back, take it a little bit easy, relax a little bit, and take your time. And it may take a little bit more time, but you can also have a great time out there in amongst everybody in the hustle bustle of the season. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We're now at Communications from Council Members. Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to announce tonight that we will be attending the Economic Development Meeting tomorrow out at Alabama A&amp;M in the College of Business Department Building. Also, we'll be attending the Leadership Academy, serving our community. This is a meeting, this academy will be on at Hampton Cove Middle School tomorrow. We are going to be honoring Huntsville Country Club 90th Anniversary Reception. That will be going on this weekend. The Redstone Update will be Monday at 8:15 at the BBC in the North Hall. We all know that on Tuesday of next week, the city will be recognizing all of the city employees who've worked 25 years, 30 years, 35 years, some 40-plus years. That will be at 7:00 at Burke Museum. Also, to attend it, the graduation exercise of the DLC Cohort Colloquium that was held at Huntsville Utilities in its training room. I am delighted to report tonight that the town meeting that we held on Tuesday certainly was attended very well. I want to thank the mayor and all of the department heads who came to the town meeting. There were a lot of citizens there from the district, and I was just delighted that you were able to answer questions, give directions. And so, Mayor, thanks so much for your attendance and your department persons that attended that meeting. Also, I close with this, Mr. President. The Len Coria Estates Neighborhood Committee met on that same night. We was in competition. But I want to thank all the members of the Len Coria Estates Homeowners Association who met, did their planning. On December 12, they were having a cleanup day, and we're working with our green team, Jar Mckee and her staff, and we're asking all the citizens who live in the Len Coria Estates to be available on Saturday, December 12. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Councilman Russell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank AT&amp;T for bringing Road Trip Nation to our city. Road Trip Nation is a group of people that come to high schools and teach the kids about careers, and they met with the ninth graders at Lee High School, and I was honored to participate in the program. It was really a great event. I also want to thank Deal News for sponsoring the lights on Clinton Avenue. If you need to go down and see the lights on Clinton, it gives it a very festive avenue... I mean, area right in front of the UGY Retail Store. So I want to thank Deal News for sponsoring that and downtown Huntsville and the mayor for putting it together. I was pleased to join Dr. Robinson at the Ditto Landing announcement yesterday. I'm sure she'll talk about it. But for my lifetime and basically all the time, the council people have talked about Ditto Landing, and it looks like they're actually going to do something. And so I was thrilled to be in the meeting, to hear that something was going to be done. So I'm looking forward to the results of that effort. This weekend, Huntsville High is hosting a wrestling tournament. It's Huntsville High Invitational. The Sports Commission is also helping Huntsville High do that. We'll have teams from all over the South participating and looking forward to that event. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Dr. Robinson?
As Mr. Russell mentioned, we did have a press release yesterday. Many thanks to Kelly Skrimshaw in the chamber for hosting that for the Ditto Board. They announced the search beginning for an executive director for Ditto Landing. Ditto is moving from a small marina with a few campsites to hundreds of acres of recreation destination project. And it's going to take a very different kind of leader to lead that effort and to carry out the vision and the plans that have been put together. Again, that process led by Dennis Madison and the big picture. There are exciting things that will happen at Ditto, but they'll only happen with the right leadership in place. So that job posting is on the Ditto website. It's dittolanding.org, and you can go that, and it closes January 16. So the qualifications are listed on there and the job responsibilities. And if anyone is interested in what will be a really exciting opportunity to change the face of Ditto, to really bring to fruition the potential that's on our riverfront, that will be a very exciting opportunity. So again, dittolanding.org is where you can find that job posting. Also, would like to mention that the mayor and I had the opportunity to visit with the Chaffey Neighborhood Association. The Chaffey Neighborhood Association is the oldest neighborhood association in the city, and it used to be that you could go to those meetings and you would see that it was the oldest neighborhood association in the city. But we saw some young neighbors there this time, and I was actually very encouraged to see some young people who are willing to step up and take leadership. And I thought it was particularly appropriate for those young people to be there and hear the mayor's vision for the city as he talked about all that we have accomplished and all that we plan to accomplish that will enhance the quality of life of our neighborhoods. They're the strength of our city, and we need to support them. It was a great meeting, and I applaud all of our neighborhood associations for the work that they do. And then finally, want to recognize Ms. Reed. For those of you who have not seen her, the piece on the Today Show, you need to see it because it's a montage of four stories, four different people who have had significant challenges in their life and who have persevered and who have not given up. It was a great... There is a great moral story in that piece, and I would really suggest that you all take a look at it. And then finally, Mayor, happy 39th and counting.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Councilman Kline?
Mr. President, I think Dr. Robinson forgot to tell the mayor that she polled the council, and by a 3-2 vote, we affirmed her best wishes for the mayor.
Thank you.
But many, many more to come. As Mayor Battle had mentioned, this is a great time of the year with all the great events that are taking place for the holidays through downtown and throughout the community. One thing that I'm really excited about participating in is the... Something that just popped up on my email a couple days ago, and it looked like it'd be a great thing to participate in. I'm going to get to go out, and I think other council members may be doing the same, to participate with local police officers, firefighters, and basically heroes throughout the city. And we are going to be going out shopping with various at-risk children who are in the Huntsville-Madison County school system. And it's going to be taking place Saturday of... Not this Saturday, but Saturday week. And it's going to be fun. It's going to get a chance for me to make a new friend and to participate. And I think it kind of gets us back to what Christmas is supposed to be all about. It's not all about commercialism, although we do like the sales tax that comes in off of that. But it's the doing things with people, giving. And this is going to be a great thing that I'm looking forward to participating in Saturday week. Something I just want to kind of wave a flag and say thank you. Thank you from me and thank you from the Rocket View Neighborhood was for the upgrade that took place on several streetlights. I think there were over 70 streetlights in the neighborhood that were upgraded. This is the neighborhood that's located basically just to the east of UAH, between Holmes Avenue and 565. And they have been working real hard to improve their neighborhood, and these upgraded streetlights, I think, are certainly going to be a great thing for safety and security. And we appreciate everything that was done by all concerned to make that happen. Also, tonight, if I leave real quick, I'm going to make a mad dash. Over the Merrimack Neighborhood, they are having their Christmas exchange... Christmas cookie exchange. And I have basically been fasting all day so that I can go in there and be a good diplomatic council member and, of course, try some of everybody's cookies that they bring in. It's a great event. Everybody in the neighborhood comes, and they all bring their best homemade cookies. And it's just one of those great events that I really look forward to. And I guess, closing, Mr. President, at the last meeting, I think we had a question that was asked. I think it's a legitimate question, and we can provide public information. We've got four downtown projects that are underway. The city's made investment in those projects, but we're not a benevolent organization. We're expecting growth, sales tax, property tax to come in to more than give us a return on our investment. And Mayor Battle, I guess I can kind of pitch it to you, and you may have others who could kind of chime in, but basically, just what are the numbers over a 20-year payback period on these projects with what we're putting in and what's coming out?
Mr. Kline, I would say that we work more than a 20-year payback period. We look at what your break-even period is, how quickly you can break even on this. You know, with the Bell Hudson Lofts, if you remember, the council put up $150,000 a year for three years for facade easement on the Bell Hudson Lofts. It was a total of $450,000. We have $123,650 coming in each year off of property tax off of it, about a 3.6-year return on our money on that project, and that's already been paid back. Many of y'all have been to the Twickenham Square Development. If you remember, that was before it was Twickenham Square. It was council court, public housing. That project, the city invested $12 million into a parking garage. $2 million of the dollars came from Huntsville Hospital because they wanted the top deck of the parking garage. $1.6 million was taken off of that price because that was the sales tax that was brought in for the development of the property into the multifamily apartments and hotel, the office building, and the retail of Publix in the shadow space there, leaving us about an $8.4 million investment in that property. The $8.4 million payback investment pays back $1.663 million per year. It's a 5.04-year payback on our numbers and gives us a very good payback on our investment there. Also, we have City Center Development, which is a Holiday Insight. We're estimating, and a lot of these numbers have to be estimated numbers. We are not allowed to go in and look at individual retail numbers of individual retail stores because that's against the law. So we don't do that. We run these numbers off of average store sales and what we see in average store sales. City Center Development, if you remember, was the old Holiday Insight. And out of it, we are going to invest probably about $2.5 million in streetscape improvements and about $118,000 in clearing and grubbing of the property for a $2.6 million investment in it. The first-year estimate, property tax, sales tax, lodging tax revenues is $2,051,000. So we will pay that off in probably a year and a quarter, pay that off, and then be past that break-even period. But if you look at each of these projects, each of them, we have tried to do to make sure that the city investment is a proper investment, is a proper way to invest your taxpayers' dollars. If you invest that money properly, then you will have a payback, which will be a very quick payback on it. And then the city will get to the place where you're making money on this development, and it is an asset for the community. So all those are to say that the four developments that we've had in the downtown area, each one of the largest, the longest payback in this has been the Twickenham Development because it was the first. It was the first big development that we had, and it was one that we had to work very hard to make happen. And it has a five-year payback. If you look at the Holiday Insight, we also have $144,000 a year coming in off of rental, plus a million dollars which will be paid to us for the sale of the Williams Aquatic Center and the Scruggs Center. So the payback on it is a very quick payback, especially for what we're investing in it. It's a streetscape improvement, which we would be doing anyway at some point in the next five years. So in our opinions, as everything that we've been able to look at, the investments have been good, sound investments for us.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Councilman Kline?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kline. Dr. Showers, I have to agree with Ms. Jackie Reed. I was at your town hall meeting, and it was a very impeccable town hall meeting, and I agree that it probably was more informing than the council. So maybe the next time you do one, we'll just do that in lieu of the council. Also, I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Tommy Brown, Department Head for Transportation, and for your employees for allowing them to help us at our Feed the Homeless Thanksgiving Dinner, Mr. Randy Griffin and Mark Wampler, and all of the drivers. We took six buses of people from various locations in Huntsville to Macedonia PB Church off of Dupree, Worthy or Worthy-Dupree. I always get them confused. And had a great time. Pastor Anonize Green and Elder Wesley was very instrumental in helping us. So thank you so kindly for that. Council members, we're at Agenda Item Number 13, Unfinished Business Items for Action. We do not have any of those. We're now at Agenda Item Number 14, New Business Items for Introduction. 14A is an introduction of an ordinance amending Section 27-91, Definitions of the Code of Huntsville Ordinances, Community Development. 14B is an introduction of an ordinance amending ordinance number 89-79, Classification and Salary Plan Ordinance, Human Resources. 14C is the introduction of an ordinance amending the Budget Ordinance Number 15-642 to modify authorized strength of departments brought by Human Resources. Do you have any discussion for any of those items, although we will take them up at our next regular council meeting? Hearing none. We're now at Agenda Item Number 15, New Business Items for Consideration or Action. The Chair wishes to hold 15B. Council members, any actions that you wish to hold?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I hold 15L, M, V, and W.
Restate those again, Councilman.
L, M, V as in Victor, W.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Council members, any other actions?
No, item U, please.
And 15U. Council members, we have to hold 15B as in Bravo, L, M, U as in Uniform, V as in Victor, and W. Any additional items that you wish to hold? Hearing none. 15A is a request for authorization to advertise public safety dispatcher positions to bring manpower up to authorized strength brought by the Police Department. 15C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the physical year 2014 Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, program budget for the city of Huntsville, Alabama, Community Development Department brought by Community Development. 15D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Family Service Center, Inc., using Community Housing Development Organization, Chodo, proceeds to purchase property located at 2714 Barber Drive for single-family construction brought by Community Development. 15E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Huntsville and Huntsville Emergency Medical Services, Inc., HEMZI, regarding advanced life support service protocols, fire and rescue. 15F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Huntsville and John C. Calhoun Community College to provide emergency medical technician training to Huntsville Fire and Rescue personnel brought by Fire and Rescue. 15G is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one full-time position of municipal records coordinator in the city clerk treasurer's department brought by the clerk treasurer. 15H is a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to invoke First Commercial Bank Letter Credit Number 1019 for Oakhurst Subdivision, fourth edition, brought by the city attorney. 15I is a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to invoke Bancorp South Bank Letter of Credit Number 362000834003 for Legendwood Subdivision, Phase 5, brought by the city attorney. Three for Legendwood Subdivision Phase Five brought by the City Attorney. Fifteen J is a resolution authorizing the City Attorney to settle the claim of George and Deborah Harriman brought by the City Attorney. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Alabama Department of Transportation for cooperative maintenance of public right-of-way along Alabama Highway One, mile post three-three, three point one four four R, two-three-three, three point one four six R, and to maintain eighty-one linear feet of existing fifteen inch RCP downstream of new drainage inlet, project number seven-one dash one-six dash Sierra Papa zero-eight brought by Engineering. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number three to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Land Design Solutions, Inc., for landscape design and construction administration services for Maple Hill Cemetery, project number six-five one dash one-four dash Sierra Papa zero-one brought by Landscape Management. Fifteen O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Amory Engineering for engineering services at the Huntsville Aquatic Center brought by General Services. Fifteen P is an ordinance amending Budget Ordinance Number Fourteen Six Sixty-five by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds brought by Finance. Fifteen Q is an ordinance amending Budget Ordinance Number Fifteen Six Forty-two by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds brought by Finance. Fifteen R is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations brought by Finance. Fifteen T is a request for authorization to advertise and field one regular full-time position of Animal Services Shelter Attendant at Grade Eight brought by Animal Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move for a solidation approval of fifteen A, fifteen C through K, fifteen N through R and fifteen T.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to award Community Action Partnership of Huntsville Madison County and Limestone Counties, Inc., with twenty-fourteen Community Development Block Grant, CBDG, funds, Further Weatherization and Rehabilitation Assistance Program, RAP, brought by Community Development. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, Councilman Culver, counsel. Um, this item will allow Community Development to make a grant of three hundred fifty thousand dollars to the Community Action Partnership, um, for their RAP program, their weatherization rehabilitation assistance program. This program helps in reducing energy costs for low-income families and our elderly residents and we're hopeful that you'll approve it tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mayor Battle, I just want to say that, uh, we certainly thank you. As you know, I serve on Community Action Partnership and all of those things that you say as it relates to enhancing the quality of life of residents, this surely does that because it affords people an opportunity to have a lower utility bill and use monies to do other things. Um, is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion by Councilman Kling, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion ready for the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Re-Contracting Services, Inc., for wind drive project relocation, project number six-five dash one-five dash Romeo Delta Zero Two brought by Engineering. Ms. Martin?
Yes, council members, this is a change order for the wind drive relocation project. It was due to unsuitable soils that were encountered along Old Madison Pike as well as repairing some of the existing sections of Old Madison Pike once we got out there. So this change order is in the amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and the anticipated construction completion date is J- January of two thousand sixteen.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ready for, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by the Dr. Robinson. Discussion, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, yes, Ms. Martin, why didn't the city know about the unsuitable soil conditions? Surely we tested before we started this project?
That's actually a good question, sir, because that section of Old Madison Pike is within the state right-of-way, so we were unable to test that soil prior to construction beginning.
Is that common?
In the state right-of-way without a permit, they do not allow you to do any test digging.
So that's a, just a normal situation, we just, we start a project and we have problems, we're gonna have to fix them?
We were trying to get ahead of Calhoun Community College expansion and so we had to go ahead and begin the wind drive section of construction and we had s- situated the contract to where we would not issue a notice to proceed on Old Madison Pike until we had the state permit.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Reed Contracting Services, Inc., for Weatherly Road Extension, AKA Hazlen Road Base Bid and Option Number Two, project number six-five dash one-four dash Romeo Delta Zero One.
Move for approval.
Second.
Bro- a motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion, Ms. Martin?
Yes, sir, this is a final adjusting change order for the Weatherly Road Extension, also known as the Hazlen Road Extension, and it was mainly for about additional sixteen hundred linear feet of electrical conduit that needed to be extended from South Parkway to the new road through the Hazlen Square Development. And so that was a contract change order amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, twenty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
Any further discussion?
I do have one point, so e- even though we have a, a change order here, the entire project still came in substantially under budget.
Yes, ma'am, uh, even with this change order, the, it was one point five million under budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Martin, why didn't we know about this need?
It was, um, part of the project scope where Huntsville Utilities had a transformer out on South Parkway and through the development, it had not been extended in the project scope to connect to the new section of road, so it was approximately about sixteen hundred feet to get the electrical service and the streetlight conduit back to the new section.
Okay, it's just, uh, again, I'm a novice on this, it seems like it would be something that somebody would have taken account for before we did the project?
You're absolutely right, it would have been included in the original project had we seen it during design.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, council members? Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement among the City of Huntsville, Alabama General Electric Company and Advanced Silicon Carbide Fibers, LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion, administration.
Good evening, council members. Uh, we bring before you another development agreement for a industrial development project, uh, the project, uh, through the, through the two-year process of recruiting this project was known as Project Badge. Uh, I think the community now is more familiar knowing it as GE Aviation. Uh, Project Badge was a competitive economic development project, uh, by GE Aviation that evaluated several locations throughout the United States, uh, for the production of ceramic matrix composite materials for the commercial aerospace industry. Uh, GE Aviation, uh, of course, is a provider of jet engines, components, integrated systems for commercial military aircraft and will produce, uh, silicon carbide materials, uh, for ceramic matrix composite components. I know that's a mouthful and I'll kind of show you, uh, those products momentarily. Uh, this type of production facility will be the first of its kind in the United States of America. Uh, the technology with GE's cooperation was developed in Japan. Uh, this will be their, their first factory to mass produce this, uh, material to, to make many, many components in the commercial airline industry. Uh, as I just mentioned, it's new technology, it's shaping the future of producing lighter and stronger, uh, components for the airline industry. Uh, the sky's the limit, they're mainly using their new next-gen engines and, and rotary fan blades, but, uh, in talking with them since the announcement, uh, seemed like every year they're finding more and more components that, uh, they can make components in, make it lighter, more efficient, uh, it will change the way we, we fly in the future.
Absolutely.
Uh, the project investment, GE will construct two manufacturing facilities on a single one-hundred acre campus. Uh, the project investment, uh, will be constructed in a two-phase approach due to the manufacturing conditions of, of making the product. Uh, phase one will be the fiber facility, uh, to the right, you see the finished product of the fiber rolls, kind of think of it as a twine, but a very high-tech twine. Uh, that capital investment will be a hundred and thirty-six million dollars and two hundred jobs. As that plant comes online, the same campus, the construct, construction will continue, uh, seamlessly into a phase two, which they call the composite tape facility, and that's where they take this, this composite ceramic matrix twine and form it into almost like a Kevlar-like material. Uh, that will produce another fifty-seven million dollar minimum capital investment, another ninety-eight jobs on the same campus. Um, like most of our economic development projects, we had a partnership. Uh, this partnership for GE Aviation included City of Huntsville, Madison County, Limestone County and our local industrial development board. Uh, the incentive that our local partnership is providing i- is, is the site, uh, and utilities to the site. The, the breakdown of that site is three and a half million dollars for a hundred acre site. Our industrial development board will be providing one point five million for that. Uh, should you approve this development agreement tonight, we would provide one million. Madison County will provide a half a million and Limestone County the same. Uh, Limestone County's half a million will be divided between a portion of the land purchased and then getting the necessary utilities to the site. Uh, so what is our return on investment? We, we always want to bring that to you, council, to know, you know, what is, what is your return on your investment? So, uh, the GE Aviation campus will lie within our newly created Tiff Six District, uh, that's very important to us, uh, as far as you recently passed that district with a pretty significant capital plan in it. Uh, the property tax generated from a two-hundred million dollar capital investment, uh, will greatly advance those projects. Uh, the project will produce a little over twenty-two point four million dollars of new property taxes over a twenty-year period within that Tiff District. Uh, the development agreement also requires GE Aviation to create a minimum of two-hundred and ninety-eight full-time employment positions and those positions must carry through the life of the development agreement, a minimum hourly wage of twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents minimum. Uh, GE Aviation will also have a minimum annual payroll per the development agreement of fourteen point six million dollars annually. Uh, I wanted to just point out the location, uh, if you look in the southwest corner of this map, you'll see the, the green location, that's within the Tiff Six District that you recently created, uh, and the GE Aviation site lies within that district. Of course, Polaris is in that district, uh, the TVA mega site, I'll remind you, uh, we remained outside the district. So our protection on investment, uh, should you approve this development agreement, uh, I think all development agreements we bring here, we, we protect the taxpayers' money. Uh, the project development agreement has provisions within to protect that local partnership investment, just not ours, but Limestone County, the Industrial Development Board and Madison County. Uh, should GE Aviation fall short in the minimum employment levels of two-hundred and ninety-eight full-time jobs, there's a condition in development agreement where we get a portion of our, a percentage of that investment back based on those jobs. So, so for instance, just quick math, easy math, say it's three hundred jobs, it's two jobs short of three hundred jobs and they produce a hundred jobs, we get two-thirds of our investment back. It, so, so it's proportional to the jobs versus the investment, uh, formula, it's what we did with Polaris, it's what we've done with Boeing, it's what we've, uh, did with Remington and we, it's kind of our formula we use and kind of demand industries we bring into, abide by that as far as the protection of our citizens. Also, should the wage rates fall below, uh, twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents, the same applies, it's proportional what that would be below of getting our public investment back. And also the capital investment, should they fall short of, of the capital investment, uh, there's a penalty to pay to get some of our investment back also. I will also add that, uh, this has a ten-year reverter, uh, should the plant close or relocate within the first ten years, we get a hundred percent of our money back. Uh, there is no pro rata, uh, they can leave nine years, eleven months, twenty-nine days, it's a hundred percent. Uh, so, so, uh, we think we're very well protected in taxpayers' money. As I mentioned, uh, these provisions or clawbacks, as we, we like to call them, uh, are very similar to what we brought before you, uh, the council for on other development agreements. Uh, the project location is a little more zoomed-in view, uh, it's at exit three, uh, if you'll see the Chase Farm Boulevard extension, uh, we received a grant, uh, for that road extension, should you approve the development agreement, we will move forward with using that grant through the industrial access funds through the State of Alabama, it was two point three million dollars, so we will have no, uh, cost in, in that road extension, which also provides both north and south of Chase Farm Boulevard, just west of the GE site, more industrial sites, uh, there, so we're getting some infrastructure benefits and the jobs with it. Uh, this is a, a rendering that GE provided, uh, that, that shows the, the proposed manufacturing facility, you'll have, uh, some engineering and, and research and development kind in the center, wide, the glass atrium here that you see there, and then to the left and right, uh, you'll have half a million square feet of, uh, manufacturing space. And I'll answer any questions you may have, council members.
Council members, any questions?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, I guess one question, Shane, I know you're talking about the two-hundred and ninety-eight jobs and I was kind of doing the math, I think we're talking about roughly about forty-six, forty-seven thousand dollar minimum per job, which...
Forty-eight thousand without benefits, with benefits...
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
They're right at sixty thousand with benefits.
Do we know, uh, are these gonna be new people who are gonna be coming in the City of Huntsville, are these gonna be jobs that are gonna be available to current citizens? I'm assuming there's not anybody out there that's currently doing these jobs?
There's not. GE will bring in, uh, a few people, uh, they've, they've said probably about ten percent, so you're looking at twenty to twenty-five, uh, GE folks to come set the factory up, some HR people to, to kind of train, but the majority of them are new jobs available to our community.
Good, thank you.
Any further discussion, council members?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Dr. Showers?
I just want to ask, um, Mr. Davis while he's at the, uh, microphone, could you give us again, uh, since you and I talked, the tentative schedule now for the first phase of the Dr. Joseph Lawery, uh, can you give us that tonight?
I can. Uh, as a matter of fact, the sign was, uh, put on the mast arm late this afternoon and we'll be back first thing in the morning. All landscaping is on-site, trees are in, uh, Saturday they'll be planting sod and Monday putting the final wearing surface down, so by next Friday, the section from Governors to Pellon will be ready to open to public.
Okay. Uh, the mayor and to the council, we are planning, uh, Ms. Jordan, uh, to have that, a program, a dedication ceremony, and, uh, I'll be getting with her next week and we'll be ready to go ahead and move and get in the family, Dr. Lawery's family here.
Everything will be complete by the end of next week, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Showers. Any further discussion? Mr. Davis, um, I just want to say that when all of this, when the governor made the announcement that Mayor Battle and I were down in Montgomery and, uh, I had an opportunity to grab the, the new part that they're gonna make and compare it to metal of the same size, and it was just amazing at the difference in the weight. And this particular material, material is about ten times stronger than steel, but yet it weighs much, much less. So I engaged in some further discussion with some of the owners there and, uh, I'm, I'm hoping one day that they're gonna take this technology and actually put it into automobiles, so maybe we'll see that coming down the pike at some time in the future.
I can tell you in twenty-fourteen, uh, GE Aviation had a hundred and sixty million dollar backlog in, in parts to be made out, out of composite ceramic materials. So, so it's a very viable, uh, business model for those guys and we think they'll do very well for a very long time here. And it, and it's kind of in our wheelhouse of what we do here in Huntsville.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Davis, for that update. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen V as in Victor is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Direct Communications for Consulting Services.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion.
Mr. Diamond, I have questions for you. Could you please tell us, uh, who the principal is of direct communications and tell us the value of the contract?
Sure. Uh, the principal of direct communications is Steve Rabey and the value of that contract is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
And what's the purpose?
Uh, the purpose of this contract is for, uh, government relations and economic development support. Uh, Steve does quite a bit of work for us, uh, building up coalitions as well as making sure that, um, Huntsville's interests are best represented down in Montgomery. Um, as you saw in the last legislative session, it was very challenging, uh, we had to play a lot of defense and, you know, we don't think anything's gonna get easier down there in this next legislative session, so Steve helps to keep the interests of the city, uh, at front of mind in front of those key decision-makers.
And I certainly agree with you, but why can't we rely on our legislators to do that? Why do we have to hire somebody?
Uh, I'll, I'll step in for you, Mr. Harrison, right here, um, we need someone who works specifically for the City of Huntsville and, and just honestly as we can be, um, legislators have many other interests, they have interest of their, of lots of different, um, groups and everything else, we need someone who works just specifically for us and who can, uh, be very, very effective down there. As Miss, uh, as, as Mr. Diamond said, one of the most important things is almost the blocking, uh, because there's so much that comes out of Montgomery, which, you know, quite frankly, uh, is not in the devan- in, in the interest of the citizens of Huntsville that, you know, we, we need a way to make sure that we can keep it from happening and, um, he is very, very effective down there, plus he works in economic development. Um, he worked on the GE project, uh, working with other counties and other cities, uh, throughout this area. He's worked on the Polaris project, on the Remington project, um, and... on the Remington project, and he, I would say, he is one of the key reasons that we were able to get $2.3 million in industrial access money for this GE project. So I think his, the return on what we invest in him is many, many times over.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, council members? Dr. Robinson?
Yes, there's one point I noted that was interesting, that that figure, $168,000, is all-inclusive. So we're not reimbursing for any expenses, and I imagine there's quite a bit of expense involved in travel and other expenses, but he's bearing that cost.
Yes, it's all-inclusive. Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. Fifteen W is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and FTI Consulting for consulting services. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers.
Mr. Chairman, I have questions for Mr. Diamond.
Yes, sir, Mr. Russell.
Mr. Diamond, who's the principal in FTI Consulting?
FTI Consulting is former Congressman Bud Kramer.
And how much are we going to pay FTI Consulting?
$108,000.
And what for?
This is for federal government relations, as well as, you know, Bud also is instrumental in helping us work with a lot of our aerospace and defense companies that have major presences up in the national capital region.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at agenda item 16A, vacation of easements. Council members, we have five items. 16A1 is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of utility and drainage easement for Lot 99, Heritage Montesano, Gaslight Way, New Wayhead. 16A2 is a resolution, is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of utility and drainage easements for Lot 58, 4650, Saddle Ridge Drive, Wright Homes. 16A3 is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of utility and drainage easements for Common Area in Lot 54, Inspiration on Green Mountain Phase II, 56 and 58, Bluffview Drive, Deltina Development. 164 is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of utility and drainage easements for Lots 34 and 35, Inspiration on Green Mountain, Phase II, 18 and 20, Bluffview Drive, Deltina Development. 16A5 is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of utility and drainage easements for Lots 2, Lot 2, Walden Run at Indian Creek, Phase II, Walden Run and Indian Creek LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move for consolidation approval of 16A1 through 5.
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Russell, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. We have no vacation of right-of-ways. 16ACD's for acceptance, we have two of those. 16AC1, utility and drainage easement, Kendall Shoe Make Properties LLC, acquired 11/10/2015. 16AC2, I'm sorry, 16C2, utility and drainage easement, Graybar Electric Company, Inc., acquired 11/11/2015.
Mr. Chairman, I move for consolidation approval of 16C1 and 2.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it carries. We're now at...
But, Mr. President, before we leave legal items, I do have a question for Mr. Joffrey.
Yes, ma'am.
Would this be an appropriate time to ask it?
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. You can, you may now.
We've had some meetings with people who are interested in having the city council pass an ordinance mandating a minimum wage. Could you comment on the appropriateness of the council or our power to do that?
I can give you my best educated guess. I would probably have to do just a little bit more research, but I do know that municipalities only have what authorities give into them under state law and the Constitution of Alabama. And I'm not aware of any enabling legislation that would authorize the City of Huntsville's governing body to adopt legislation to regulate wages at all. It may be that in other jurisdictions, maybe like Birmingham or Jefferson County, they may have special legislation that's applicable only to that class of municipality that gives them the authority to do so. I'm not aware that that's true, but it's possible. But without such legislation, we would not have that authority.
And I believe that there are some municipalities that have done it, that have been challenged on it also.
I think that's correct. I don't know the litigation history behind that, but I can find that out for you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Joffreyon. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. We're now at agenda item number 17, non-roster communications from the public. Ms. Reed, state your name and address for the record, please.
Jackie Reed, Jack Coleman Drive. I forgot early tonight. Some neighbors in holiday homes are fussing sort of, kind of, and they're happy that a new park has gone in over there, but they were promises made that you're going to put up some lights before some of them can get in those neighborhoods. I don't have the streets with me, but whoever knows the holiday inn area, I'll have them at the next meeting. They said you promised them lights, and you never did put them up. So if you promise them people something, do your jobs, is all I say. I see two-way traffic could return to some downtown streets. Oh, me. I ain't going to get into that tonight, but anyway, I can't understand what we're doing downtown. Some people tell me you're going to put $100 million into downtown. I hope we don't do like the state of Alabama. And, you know, I'm for good economic development and good jobs in this city. I never understood, though, why big corporations, it's already been in business for millions of years, don't have to lay some money on the table when they come to the cities and the state. Look at the state. They took this trust fund, the rainy day fund, now they're after the education money. But when $70 million come in here to bring the jobs in here, they hand it out. But services, letting people out of prison, no highway patrols, cutting all the services for the public and the people for jobs. These big-money people, I'm for good jobs, but they've got the bank behind them instead of the city and the taxpayers. Let them lay some money on the tables, and we've got to quit giving this city away. I know Kling and the mayor got into Holiday Inn over here. We paid $6.8 million for that. Nobody's told me anything about the aquatic center or the other what it praises for. Nobody knows. But we cannot give this city away. We need $144,000 a year for 90 years. Oh, God, I won't be here. Some of you won't either, though. Think about it. 90 years from now, none of you won't be here. So set all these people up in business, let them give it to their people somewhere down the line. Maybe they'll make some money. I have a problem to think that we're going to come out ahead. And I don't know about those apartments and complexes over there that you gave that property away across from a federal courthouse. 90, 50, 50 to 90 years? I'll have the real picture. Y'all keep this big picture in mind. I'm going to come up with the real picture. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Kling.
You know, it's not within the district I represent, but, you know, I think there've been some good things downtown and, you know, within balance. I think we've stepped up and done some good projects. It looks like they're going to have some good investment, but we're not putting all our eggs into one basket in downtown. I think we can see a lot of things taking place throughout the community. In fact, putting something back to the community, I'm excited about, I think, a projected $70, $80, maybe even $90 million are going to be spent in recreational facilities for the people in the community over at John Hunt Park. I think just the last meeting, we authorized a, you know, very big commitment for the new natatorium, you know, that's going in over, adjacent to the existing natatorium. But, you know, things are going to the community, and, you know, that's the way it should be. You know, we've got six of us up here, and we're all haggling it out in public on the best way to use the money, but I do think some good things have taken place. But, you know, there are a lot of other things going on in the community other than downtown, and, you know, let's put it on the table.
Thank you, Councilman Kling. You may state your name and address for the record, and you have approximately three minutes to address us.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Deon Esther Smith, and I just want to say that...
Would you repeat your name again for the record, please?
Okay, Deon Esther Smith.
Deon Esther?
Smith.
Deon Smith.
Okay. Okay. On Tuesday, I presented my concern at the Richard Shower Center, but it was not satisfactorily addressed to me. Okay, therefore, I'm here today. I did want to just put a little thing in here, and I'm not going to preach a sermon, but I do want to say this. I hope you can hear me.
Okay, just pull your mic down a little bit closer to you, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. These six things does the Lord hate, yea, seven are abomination to Him. A proud look, a lying tongue, hands that shed innocent blood, a heart that divides wicked imaginations, feet that are swift to run to mischief, and a false witness that speaks lies, and he that sows discord among brethren. Okay. The reason I read that is because what my concern is, is that abortion clinic that's over on Sparkman Drive. Now, we know that abortion is a very hot and contentious issue in our nation, okay, and that this was a problem where it was at another location. But yet and still, I don't know what the rationalization was or the practicality of it was of putting it in the location that it is at right now. It is close to three different, well, two schools, Highlands and right there across the street from AAA, not too far from Oakwood. Okay, we know because of many different times and at various locations that they have been violent acts at these different clinics. Okay, so this puts the students, the parents, the educators, local businesses, and the neighborhood in imminent danger, possibly. Okay, so my concern is, is why would you put that clinic right there, regardless of what side of your issue you are on, right there where it's presently located? I would like that addressed. Also, I want to say that, as we all know, and is very readily available to us, is that Margaret Sanger and her eugenic friends wanted to target certain groups of our population. They believed in population control. It's no, it should be, you know, no ignorance on anybody's part that this was her agenda. I have her original autobiography, unabridged and unaltered, 19, it was published in, let me see here, I'm sorry, 1938. You should, and I also have downloaded in my phone, The Pivot of Civilization and the woman, I mean, the man in New Race. And the reason I read that scripture is because she epitomized all of those things I just read that God says is abomination to Him. She made...
Ms. Smith, your time is up. Do you need another minute?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So her targeted group were minority groups, and here we have in a predominantly black neighborhood, this, I'm not saying it's Planned Parenthood, but it is abortion clinic across the street from that middle school. So I would like the council or someone to give me a rationalization why you put it right there and endangering all these people if there's a bomb or active shooter or whatever. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and I'm going to ask Mr. Joffreyon to address that shortly, either publicly here tonight or privately. But, ma'am, if you'll come to the microphone, please. State your name and address.
My name is Angela Boyd.
Ms. Boyd.
And I'm following up with Esther's comments. She's a new friend that I made at Councilman Showers Town Hall meeting, so I thank you for that. I love the city of Huntsville. I've been here over 25 years. I love all the hard work from all the city people, and I want to just pat you on the back for that. But we do, we talk a lot about enhancing the quality of life, particularly in North Huntsville, where I live, when we have a blight. We have a blight, and that is the abortion clinic up there. How can you enhance the quality of life when you are killing people? And that's what that abortion clinic does. It's a huge industry. Esther was talking about Margaret Sanger, who started Planned Parenthood. It's estimated that there are 1.5 billion children that have been killed just based on what this woman started. There's tons of lies out there and deceptions about when human life begins. But really, North Huntsville, I mean, having that abortion clinic there, I know for a fact that between 75 and 80% of the aborted babies in this city at this clinic are black. And we might wonder why. I mean, God has made all human beings created in His image, and it's just a travesty that we don't have better education about life and the city. I know there was a bill before the House, the state legislature, rather, about limiting the abortion clinics within a certain number of feet from a school, and I would just, I don't believe that passed. And that was a travesty, and I just wonder if the city council, it seems like the city council could have had a voice in maybe getting that to the floor or getting that voted for when it reached the State House. I like justice. God likes justice, and abortion is injustice. The government was designed by God to be a protector of people, not a facilitator of murdering babies. I think we're talking about bringing all this industry into Huntsville, which I think is a great thing, but one industry we could do away with is the abortion industry, and perhaps we could just ship that overseas. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. And, Mr. Joffreyon, would you like to address that here publicly, or would you prefer to get with them?
Well, I wouldn't like to address it at all, but I will go ahead and respond tonight without getting into the issue of abortion, because that's not an issue that the city council has any jurisdiction over. It's currently legal within the United States. It's a medical procedure. This is a medical clinic. The city didn't put the business there or put the use there. It is, a medical clinic is a permitted use within that zoning classification, and the city really has no authority to deny anyone the right to put a permitted use within a particular zoning district if it's allowed within that zoning district. So that was a decision that the owner of the facility made, and city council and the city administration have no authority to deny that.
Thank you, Mr. Joffreyon. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Move to adjourn.
We adjourn. Thank you.